Good evening. The 52nd meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As I would like to remind folks from the public, if you could please wear your mask at all times, this council is fully vaccinated as well as boosted, and we respect the executive branch's wishes. We will also ask that you turn off any electronic devices. If not, at least put them on silent mode. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Pastor John Love of Greater Grace World Outreach. Pastor Love has been chaplain for over thirty years and currently also serves as chaplain for the New York Knicks. It is our pleasure to welcome you here to the Baltimore City Council.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity. And as we assemble in this hall, my prayer is for the great city of Baltimore that you would lead all of the officials, all of those in positions of leadership, all of those who have been elected to serve this great city. We're reminded of the proverb from Solomon in the Old Testament, which says that how important it is for us to trust in the Lord with all of our hearts, not to lean to our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you, and your promise is to direct our paths. I pray that you would give those in leadership here in the great city of Baltimore direction, guidance, wisdom from above. Thank you for this opportunity, and again, give them greater grace, Lord, to lead this city and to protect its citizens and to provide for all of the needs that have brought them to this office. We ask all of this in the precious name of your Son. Amen.
Amen. At this time, please join me. Thank you Pastor Love in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, Madam Clerk, I would like to introduce everyone to the Deputy City Council President for the day, Ms. Nadia Green Noel. So if we could please give a hand for Ms. Nadia Green Noel. Now can you tell everyone where you're from, what you want to be when you grow up?
So I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, born and raised, basically.
What school?
I attend Mount Washington Elementary School in the fifth grade. And when I grow up, I really want to be a culinary scientist, basically helping people find healthier ways to their favorite foods, and also finding like different resources to find those favorite foods.
Thank you. So I would like the entire city to know that we've been in good hands today by Ms. Noel Green. So at this time, we'll now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of our agenda. We will now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first nomination.
EA two three dash zero one seven nine, John A. McCully, Member, Board of Ethics, District Six.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight one, Rachel Marquez, Member, Commission for Women, District Fourteen.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight two, Flor de Maria Gusti, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Five.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight three, Kevin Griffin Moreno, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Fourteen.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight four, Marley Cardona Mas, M.A., Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District One.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight five, Juliana Valencia Banks, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Seven.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two three dash zero one eight six, Lydia Walter Rodriguez, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Two.
This nomination has also been assigned to rules and oversight. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six two, In rem foreclosure, scope of subtitle for the purpose of amending City Code Article Twenty-eight, subtitle eight point one, in rem foreclosure vacant and abandoned property to permit a land bank authority of Baltimore City to initiate and participate in certain in rem foreclosure proceedings on behalf of the mayor and city council of Baltimore City and providing for a contingent effective date. Sponsors Ramos and Torrance.
The council would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one folds into the next one, but this particular bill would allow the land bank, once we create it, to also proceed on in rem proceedings to be able to acquire properties. So it's just adding the land bank to the bill, to the ordinance to allow for another entity to foreclose on vacant abandoned properties through in rem. Thank you.
Thank you. I would see the hand raised of Councilman Bullock, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Glover. Thank you. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six three, Land Bank Authority, for the purpose of providing certain unamended authorizing language for context of this ordinance, establishing the land bank authority of Baltimore City, providing for the authority's powers, duties, and limitations, providing for a board of directors for the selection in terms of the board's members, and for the powers and duties of the board, providing certain immunities, providing for certain tax exemptions, and generally relating to the establishment and operation of a land bank authority as authorized by city charter. Sponsor Ramos and Torrance.
I yield the floor to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. I am so excited to bring these two pieces, this piece of legislation and the one before it, to you. There are over two hundred land banks across the country showing success in vast reductions of vacant and abandoned properties. This will be Baltimore's land bank. It is something that I've been working on for a while, and I want to acknowledge that Mayor Dixon worked on this in her term here, and her foundational work is what we've built our land bank on. When Councilman Torrance and I came into office, we convened a large group of community development stakeholders to create the land bank. That group has grown over the last two years. It started with community development organizations like Fight Light Baltimore, Parity Homes, Community Law Center, Park Heights Renaissance, Southeast CDC, Southwest Partnership, Neighborhood Housing Services, Rebuild Metro, Enterprise Community Partners, and so much more, so many more. It has grown to include the Maryland Building Industry Association, GBBR, Build, Home Starter, and so many others. We have convened a diverse coalition of groups that work in this field, know the crisis, provided their expertise, and I'm so grateful for their work over the last two years on this legislation. Mr. President, we know the data, right? We have about fourteen thousand two hundred, if not more, vacant and abandoned properties, and only a little over a thousand of them are owned by the city. We have many more vacant lots, and we have so many others that are about to become vacant. Most of these have extremely high liens, which is why we have advocated so much to have the in rem foreclosure process. According to a recent study by the Twenty-First Century Cities, Baltimore is spending a million dollars, excuse me, a hundred million dollars a year on costs associated with vacant properties, including police and fire as well as maintenance. Baltimore is losing a hundred million dollars a year in tax revenues from non-payment of taxes from these vacant properties. Vacants are directly tied to our violence, and when children walk to school near vacant properties, the cortisol in their brain increases and blocks learning. It is no longer acceptable that residents have to live next to vacant properties that damage theirs, and that we lost three firefighters and many other residents to this crisis. We are also missing out on amazing opportunities to attract more residents and sparking economic activity. A recent Live Baltimore study found that we could attract five thousand to seven thousand more residents each year if we had the inventory, and turn renters and legacy residents and renters into homeowners. We can do all of this in a sustainable and equitable way. This means we could grow our tax base so that the city can be creative and expand our opportunities. Baltimore's land bank will acquire and dispose of vacant and abandoned properties and lots in an efficient, equitable, and community-based manner. We have built this so that the community input and consideration, we have built this so that there is community input and consideration, ensuring that residents are not displaced, and that we can control the outcome of the properties. We have built this to attract financing. You heard in our hearing a few last week that the city does not have enough money to do the work that needs to be done, so we need to attract that funding to make it work. We are also doing, what we're also doing here is building Baltimore's capacity to address this crisis. We have to get to scale if we are ever going to see the block-by-block solution we need. More importantly, we have to go to areas that have been traditionally ignored because of the racist policies of the past, and frankly, that are still in practice today. There is no question about it. There is more than enough work to do. In twenty twenty-two, there were eleven hundred eighty-nine properties that became vacant, while thirteen hundred sixty-six were rehabbed or demolished. The work of vacancy prevention, process improvements, and boosting the community development sector are all just as important as addressing the vacancies. This is why we envision DHCD continuing to do the great work of vacancy prevention while the land bank is working diligently on acquiring and disposing of vacant and abandoned properties. I'm extremely pleased with where DHCD has been in implementing the new in rem foreclosure strategy. The commissioner estimated that when at full capacity, the city will foreclose on two hundred properties per month. We need a mechanism to ensure that those properties do not sit in the inventory but are out the door to homeowners or developers or prospective homeowners using a block-by-block strategy with the community's input and vision in mind without displacing residents. This is what the land bank will do. We also envision the land bank only in existence until this work is done, which in the bill we have for fifteen years. The land bank is a quasi-governmental entity with the mayor or his designee, the council president or designee, comptroller or designee, and the commissioner, housing commissioner, along with residents and stakeholders on the board. It will solely concentrate on acquisition and disposition of vacant properties. It will be flexible in hiring, firing, hiring, financing, and operations, and transparent. Other cities have done this, like Detroit and Cleveland, and have seen extremely positive results. Now is the time. We cannot wait any longer for action on this crisis, because to me, it is related to, and frankly, the basis for every other crisis we have in our city. I don't want Mr. Bell, who lives in my district, living next to a vacant property he's lived next to for thirty years. We do not want our children walking next to vacant properties. We have to lower our violent crime, and we certainly do not want to lose any other resident or firefighter. This is the time to take action. I look forward to the dialogues during our hearings, and I thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, for your support.
Thank you so much. I see the hand raised of Councilman Torrance. Do you would like to speak?
Good evening, colleagues. It is a great day to introduce legislation that we believe firmly will change the landscape of Baltimore. My colleague alluded to it, but it is time for us to create an economic revival in communities that are often forgotten about. And I say that when we think about vacancies of forty and fifty and sixty percent in communities, where persons live on a block where they're the only person in their row. It's an opportunity for us to create an entity that DCHD can't do. This entity will have all the tools that DCHD has, however, it will have a nonprofit perspective, where we can use private funding to fund immediate ass and do the block-by-block strategy that DCHD has been wanting to do for a long time. When I say this, this is a recovery of Black and Brown neighborhoods that were forgotten about because of racist housing policies and current banking industry issues right now. There is an assessment gap. There is an appraisal gap. There is an issue where we can build Black wealth in communities that are staying there. To the residents of Baltimore who are upholding our current property tax base, and you're living next to a vacant home, we want to create a process where you can buy the home next to you, and it be a streamlined process, one that is equitable in terms of getting you access, but ensuring that you have the same level and playing field as a developer, whether it be small or large, but in addition to help you realize your dream and be able to do what you need to do next door. Case in example, I have residents who often want to buy vacant homes but cannot purchase them because they don't know how to do a renovation. How do we have an entity that can teach you how to do that? How do we have an entity that can probably offer you a mortgage as well to do that actual thing? So colleagues, I ask you to co-sponsor and join us in this discussion so that we can finally have an opportunity to bring an economic revival in communities that were often forgotten about. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Bullock, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen. Thank you. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six four, Baltimore City Fiscal Policy Democrization Task Force Establishment, for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Fiscal Policy Democrization Task Force, providing for the composition, member terms, and organization of the task force, providing for the staffing of the task force, establishing the duties of the task force, requiring submission of a final report, requiring public listening sessions, establishing a timeline for nominations to the task force to be submitted to the city council, establishing a time period within which the task force shall first convene, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Cohen.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Tonight, through this legislation, we will begin the process of reforming, restructuring, and/or abolishing the Board of Estimates. This bill authorizes a seven-person task force made up of researchers, minority business leaders, labor leaders, racial and economic justice advocates, and regular Baltimoreans to study best practices, listen, and propose solutions to how we can fix our city's spending board. The BGE conduit deal has once again revealed that Baltimore's strong mayor system of government needs reform. As Mayor Scott wrote as City Council President in twenty twenty, "If the mayor wants a contract before the BOE to be approved, it will be approved, even when questions are unanswered and even when the public has serious concerns. The only thing that can change this dynamic is structural change." I appreciate the mayor's strong words, and I agree. Structural change is needed. I hope to remove politics from the equation by allowing Baltimoreans to research, listen, debate, and negotiate and produce their own set of recommendations for a charter amendment. A few quick examples: In Frederick, Maryland, any contract over fifty thousand dollars goes straight to their Board of Aldermen, which is their city council. In Albany, New York, the Board of Estimates consists of five elected officials. Each one gets one vote. The options are endless. I appreciate the past work that has been done on this topic by council members McCray, Burnett, Comptroller Henry, and frankly, Mayor Scott. This bill authorizes our task force to publish a final report by December first, twenty twenty-three, at which point it would conduct listening sessions to gather input. Based on the report and the sessions, I hope to introduce a charter amendment by this time next year. While we all love our city, I know of no one who loves the Board of Estimates. It is opaque, it lacks transparency, it is difficult to navigate, and with prior mayors before this one, it led to corruption. We need to democratize governance and acknowledge that our strong mayor system simply has not served our city. I look forward to a committee hearing on this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett. This bill has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six five, rezoning six zero one through six two one East Biddle Street, one one zero one through one one two nine Forest Street, six zero two East Chase Street, and one 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 zero Nursery Place, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as six zero one, six zero three, six zero five, six zero seven, six zero nine, six eleven, six thirteen, six fifteen, six seventeen, six nineteen, and six twenty-one East Biddle Street, eleven oh one, eleven oh three, eleven oh five, eleven oh seven, eleven oh nine, eleven eleven, eleven thirteen, eleven fifteen, eleven seventeen, eleven nineteen, eleven twenty-one, eleven twenty-three, eleven twenty-five, eleven twenty-seven, and eleven twenty-nine Forest Street, six zero two East Chase Street, and eleven hundred Nursery Place, Block eleven sixty-eight, Lots fifteen through forty-two, as outlined in red on the accompanying plate, from the R eight zoning district to the C one zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Stokes.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six six, zoning, conditional use of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, two thousand one Boone Street, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as two zero zero one Boone Street, Block four zero one seven, Lot zero four eight, as outlined in red on the accompanying plate, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six seven, prohibition, gas-powered debris removal equipment, for the purpose of prohibiting the use of gas-powered debris removal equipment in Baltimore City, defining certain terms, establishing procedures for reporting the use of gas-powered debris removal equipment, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Dorsey.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know some of my colleagues are looking forward to a reiteration of the casual remarks I made at the lunch. I'm sorry to disappoint. I'm not going to be revisiting that, except in the most brief way, to say, I just don't know anybody that's thrilled about gas-powered leaf blowers. I don't know anybody that's like, man, that noise that I got to listen to while I'm washing the dishes, or watching TV, or trying to work from my desk at home, or just be at peace in my living room or bedroom. I don't know anybody that's like really happy about having to listen to that noise next to them, and it's something that people complain about every year. It's a seasonal problem, and there are quieter, less environmentally harmful alternatives that are readily available to people, and I think that we should be making everybody move in the direction of something that's quieter, that disturbs the peace less, and that is less environmentally harmful. And so I propose that we ban gas-powered leaf blowers or debris removal equipment, as this bill refers to them, and I thank anybody who wish to be a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I see the hand raised of Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Ramos. This bill has been assigned to H E T. Now we're going to turn to resolutions.
City Council Resolution two three dash zero one six zero R, Study and Report Eviction Chattles, Disposal of Tenants' Possession, for the purpose of requiring the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the City Solicitor, the Baltimore City Sheriff, and the Comptroller to submit a report that details how their respective agencies assist in protecting tenants' rights during the course of the eviction process, including the disposal of tenants' possessions and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Torrance. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm entering a resolution that is solely about empathy. As we know about this pandemic, many people have faced eviction. One of the serious questions that we have, and we all have this, when bulk items are placed in the right way, on front yards, or anywhere else, where do they come from? I think it's an opportunity for us to examine again with, once a program we have with the Department of Public Works, where we store the materials for persons evicted at our yards, and allow them to come back and give them the humanity of not having to start over. In addition to that, this is just environmentally friendly. Those are items that will not end up in a landfill or burned anywhere in the city. It's an opportunity for us to be environmentally correct and safe, but also meet people where they are and provide them opportunity for dignity. With that, I encourage anyone to sponsor as well.
Thank you. I see the hand raised of Councilman Burnett, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Cohen, as well as Councilman Glover. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Folks, before we move into second reader, small token of the council's appreciation, it's the City Council Baltimore Presidential Citation. I, Nick J. Millsby, President of Baltimore City Council, do hereby present the President's Citation to Nadia Green Noel in recognition of being the first Deputy Council President of Baltimore City. We hope this day is filled with lessons and experiences that will be memorable for years to come. Madam Deputy Council President, job well done on servicing the city of Baltimore and all of your constituents. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to do it at the end. We can do it now. There was a couple numbers that were off for the executive nominations, so we want to make sure that we read it and write on first reader. Madam Clerk, so if you could just read the name, I mean, sorry, the number, and then the names, we'll make sure that it's properly recorded. Yep.
EA two three dash zero one seven nine, John A. McCully, Member, Board of Ethics, District Six. EA two three dash zero one eight zero, Rachel Marquez, Member, Commission for Women, District Fourteen. EA two three dash zero one eight one, Flor de Maria Gusti, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Five. EA two three dash zero one eight two, Kevin Griffin Moreno, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Fourteen. EA two three dash zero one eight three, Marley Cardona Mas, M.A., Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District One. EA two three dash zero one eight four, Juliana Valencia Banks, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Seven. EA two three dash zero one eight five, Lydia Walter Rodriguez, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Two.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we're going to jump into the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A of the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is adopted. We will now turn to bills on second reader. Before we do, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing no objection, we're in short titles. We're going to go to ECD first. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill two two dash zero two zero four, Vacant Structures, Three One One, Complaint Finds.
The body would like to recognize Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh two oh four, this bill was heard on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Sponsor, President Mosby. I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything about this bill before we move, okay? I move the amendments.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are approved.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved, and will be printed for third reading. At this time, Madam Clerk, please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two two dash zero two one four, Franchise Underground Snow Melt System.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh two one four, also, this is, sponsor is the administration presented by the President. This bill was heard on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I move the amendments.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are approved. Madam Vice President.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. It will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two two dash zero two eight nine, zoning, conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, eight six seven Holland Street.
The body would like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh two eight nine, sponsor, Councilmember Bullock. This bill was heard on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, findings and facts are approved. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. It will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two two dash zero three zero zero, Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority Renewal through April twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven.
The body would like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Bill number twenty-two dash zero three zero zero, this bill was heard on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, Madam Vice President. Oh, no amendments, right? Was that any amendment?
One more, no, there's one more bill.
It was no amendments on that last bill, though, right?
No.
Okay. The bill is approved, it will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution two two dash zero one zero one R, informational hearing, mayor's recommendations, thirty-day review of strategies to eliminate Review of Strategies to Eliminate Vacant and Abandoned Properties.
The body would like to recognize Madam Vice President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. 22-0101R, Sponsor, Councilmember Ramos. This bill was heard on March 7th, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Now, we're gonna go into rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0175, Faith Leach, City Administrator, City of Baltimore Administrator, District 11.
Body would like to recognize Chairman of the Committee. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a final vote on this nomination today, and I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed and accepted. Now, we're gonna go to bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0304, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $310,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0305, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $1,500,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0306, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $32 million. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0307, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $35,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Folks, we are about a fifth way through. We're gonna continue to push through, and then we'll be done. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0308, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of General Services, $750,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0309, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of General Services, $675,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0310, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of General Services, $8,400,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0311, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Finance, $1,900,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We have two-thirds left. Let's keep rolling. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0312, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Altie, Mayor Altie, sorry, I said tongue twister, Convention Center Hotel, $5,375,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0313, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Altie, Miscellaneous General Expenses, $22,400,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0314, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Planning, $485,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0315, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Planning, $13,520,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0316, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, $2,725,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Let's make the record reflect accurately that Chairman Schleifer is a no on this. Chairman Schleifer is a no on the previous bill. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0317, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $1,575,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We're now on the back stretch. Only three bills left. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0318, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $275,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0319, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $2,575,000. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. And last but certainly not least, Madam CEO Dana Moore. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the last bill.
City Council Bill 23-0328, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, $2,388,311. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Give it up for our amazing clerk. Thank you so much, Taylor. At this time, we're gonna jump into committee announcements. First committee, Madam Vice President, E C D.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first two announcements, I'm adding on to hearings that will already be in place. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings. On March 28th, 2023, at 2:10 p.m., Bill Number 23-0353, which is titled, Community Reinvestment and Resparations Commission. And then, on April 4th, 2023, at 2:10 p.m., we will hear Bill Number 22-0158, and that's the landmark list, house truck number five, the Oliver Community Firehouse. And then, on May 2nd, 2023, at 2:00 p.m., Bill Number 22-0325, that zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 Zone District, Variance 466, Hornell Street.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice President, we'll now go to E W Y. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold legislative oversight, 23-0035, Thursday, April 27th, 2023. At 5 o'clock, it will be televised, inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Public Schools to come before this committee to discuss students' math scores. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. At this time, we're gonna turn it back over to E C D. Madam Vice President.
Just back, going back to a correction of the bill number for April 4th, 2023. It's Bill Number 21-0158, the landmark list for the Oliver Community Firehouse.
Thank you, Ms. Coats. We're gonna go to Health, Environment, and Technology, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, P S O, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Rules and Legislative Oversight, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And then, last but certainly not least, Ways and Means, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March 28th, at 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. Council Resolution 22-0125R, Informational Hearing, Occupancy Permits, Inspections, and Code Enforcement. Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. Council Resolution 22-0124R, Informational Hearing, Residential Rental Licensing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll now turn to regular announcements. Members, if you have any regular announcements, please raise your hand. I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Father William Burke, Monsignor, for 41 years at St. Francis of Assisi in the Mayfield community, my grade school alma mater. And he brought students here to these chambers, to this building, every year for 40, 41 years, until he retired. As recently as two years ago, I met in these chambers with students who, like me, came here annually as eighth graders on a downtown field trip, where he also took students to Harbor Place and to Lexington Market. He was a pretty amazing, but utterly humble guy from Baltimore City. He was 89 years old, raised in Park Heights, and an alum of Loyola Blakefield, Loyola College, and St. Mary's Seminary, all here in Baltimore City, was the founder of the Catholic charity, Catholic Campaign for Human Development, that became a national organization of the U.S. Conference of Bishops, and just utterly selfless in his service, even as far back as the '68 riots, starting a food distribution hub at St. Anne's Church on Greenmount Avenue, that remained in operation for decades and decades afterward. He served at a number of parishes over his early years as a priest, but spent 41 years at St. Francis of Assisi, where he was just a stalwart of the community. And so, I ask for a moment of silence for Father William Burke. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I see the hand raised of Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a special guest with me this evening.
Floor privileges?
Yes. Don't need to make a motion.
I extend floor privileges.
All right. So, one of my favorite memories in childhood, early teenage years, was listening to Baltimore club music. I would love to tell y'all I was actually good at it. I was not, but I did try. But more importantly, it's a style of music that's unique to the city of Baltimore, and that is a part of a culture, I think, that a lot of us, growing up in the city, were a part of. And so, I went and came across Terry, Terry Weddington. He is known as TSU Terry, featured on Netflix. If you guys got to see the clips, Dark City Beneath the Beat, it features Baltimore club culture, lifts it up. I started following him on Instagram, and I'm like, this guy is in Russia, Canada, St. Lucia, Kipp Academy, I mean, you name it. He is an ambassador for the music. And so, we connected offline, and I wanted to just lift it up. I think it's important that we showcase the arts in the city. I know Councilman Dorsey, he's done a yeoman's job over the years, lifting up the arts and music in Baltimore. And Terry has been, you know, the Apollo Theater all over the world, doing the work. And so, wanted to give him a resolution and give folk their flowers while we can, for putting on the city and really putting out a good image and a good message for Baltimore, and being the ambassador that you are. So, have a resolution for you, Terry. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Terry Weddington, AKA TSU Terry, in recognition for your commitment to showcasing Baltimore's club style, dance culture, in a positive way, and being a global ambassador for our city. The entire membership extends its best wishage on this memorable occasion and directs it to be presented today, signed by myself. Council President Mosby, on behalf of the Baltimore City Council.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. President, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important to also announce that Edmondson Westside won the 1A state championships, men's basketball team. I have invited to come out to a future meeting to bring them down here and show love for them. As you all know, Edmondson Westside High School student body has been through so much this year, with the loss of two students. So, I think it was a very emotional game for them to really get it done. And so, I just wanted to congratulate them as well, for that huge success in representing not only Baltimore City, but the 8th district.
Yep. And that game happened to be an all Baltimore City state championship game against Lake Clifton, and the famous coach over there. And then, we also have Omar Smith and the Baltimore City College that won it in two, the 3A division. So, we have two Baltimore City high schools. Unfortunately, Baltimore Polytechnic Women in 3A were not successful, and they lost. But definitely a sweep by Baltimore, Baltimore metropolitan region. The other 2A, the other two schools that won in the male division were from Baltimore County, Parkville and my cousin at Newtown, Newtown. So, we would like to uplift all of Baltimore City, as well as Baltimore metro area youth who really showed out in the state this past weekend. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Stokes.
Mr. President, you forgot St. Francis High School, too.
St. Francis High School.
So, I want to do a moment of silence for Bobby Green, not related, because I want to mention some other person. Mr. Calvin Green was a Dunbar Porter, 58. He was a Navy veteran. He was the first black Assistant Fire Chief for the U.S. Army. And him and his wife have been together since they were 13. So, we give members silence for that. And the Deputy President of City Council, that's his granddaughter. So, we're gonna give him over the silence.
Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, with budget season upcoming, we will have, I've been working very closely with your office, we will have schedules for colleagues on your desks at the next meeting in the City Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And then, Councilman Torrance?
Save the date for April 15th. The 7th district is going to work on having our third annual Gwinns Falls cleanup. So, this is Gwinns Falls cleanup from Jared Hill Park to Lincoln Park. So, if you're interested, coming by, help us plant some trees, as well as flowers, and clean up the parkway. We welcome you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just ask for a moment of silence for my uncle Curtis Green, who just passed away two days ago. He was a legend in East Baltimore. He loved people, and people loved him as well. So, I just ask that we keep him in prayer. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that.
Curtis Green. Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to offer another moment of silence for Ms. Leanna Clifton of District 9. She was an exceptional and nurturing mother, grandmother, and community champion in South Baltimore. She leaves behind many family, friends, and loved ones. So, thank you very much.
No, thank you so much. Are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, that concludes regular announcements. We're gonna go into adjournment. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, March 27th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now 47 victims of homicide this year, the more than 1,965 Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, and also for Father William Burke, Bobby Green, Curtis Green, and Leanna Clifton. Burke, Bobby Green, Curtis Green, and Leanna Clifton.
Thank you. There being no additional business before the desk, this will conclude the 52nd meeting of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, please be safe, and we absolutely love you.